I hear my call is special meeting. Answer the prayer. I would like to have a moment of silence for Councilman Dennis Klein. He served in the late 80s, I believe, but he just kind of passed away. Our citizens. Our Father, who art in heaven, has a holy name. In this chamber, prayed by the flying guides, that we may do all things well, according to thy will and amen. Now we go into the number of prayers.
My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Bonzel.
Here.
Mr. Gadd.
Here.
Mr. Duracy.
Here.
Mr. Kutch.
Here.
Mr. DeNardo, not here yet. Mr. Thompson.
Here.
Mr. Brayden.
Here.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Six members present. Moving on to item E, third reading of ordinances, resolutions. Item E1, ordinance authorizing the Norwood Safety Service Director to enter into an agreement with Advertising Vehicles Incorporated, doing business as exposure for the supply of certain digital and static signage. Any other motions? Motion by Mr. Kelch, which we have for the reading. Second, Mr. Gadd. Any discussion? Please hold on.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Gadd.
Yes.
Mr. Duracy.
Yes.
Mr. Kutch.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, ma'am.
Six members present, voting nine, motion passes. And Kelch for the reading.
Ordinance authorizing the Norwood Safety Service Director to enter an agreement with Advertising Vehicles Incorporated, DBA exposure for the supply of certain digital and static signage.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. May I have a motion? Mr. Gadd.
Motion to pass the ordinance.
Motion by Mr. Gadd to pass the ordinance. Second by Mr. Kelch. Any discussion? Please hold on.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Gadd.
Yes.
Mr. Duracy.
Yes.
Mr. Kutch.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
No.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry.
That was a no?
We have five eyes, one no. Motion passes. Moving on to item G1, ordinance to change appropriations for the year 2020 and declaring an emergency. Mr. Bonzel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would move that we have all three readings.
Motion by Mr. Bonzel, we have all three readings. Mr. Gadd. I'm sorry, Mr. Brayden.
I'll second that motion.
Mr. Brayden. Any discussion? Mr. Bonzel.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I think this is a generic, I know in many ways probably going out, we have more to add on this, but essentially these are appropriation changes that just have to happen over the years to keep everything kind of balanced down. So water specifically, I think that has a little bit to do with our, the water study that we did this year, if you can, we suggest that, but I don't have all of that information. Long story short is that we do have to pass this by the end of the year, so doing all three readings is going to be important today or else we discuss this special meetings or tomorrow or for later.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzel. And for the record, Mr. DeNardo. Mr. DeNardo, we're on item G1, the ordinance to change appropriations for the year 2020 and declaring an emergency. We have motion by Mr. Bonzel and a second by Mr. Brayden, we have all three readings. Mr. Bonzel, just a few comments, like any comments about the appropriations?
I feel like Mr. Gadd was just talking about the reason why we have to pass this tonight because I think this year I don't have all three readings from the guide and stuff like that. I don't actually, but I'll follow on that. We can move forward, there was a second.
And for the discussion, please hold on.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Gadd.
Yes.
Mr. Duracy.
Yes.
Mr. Kutch.
Yes.
Mr. DeNardo.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
All members present, voting nine, motion passes. Mrs. Williams, may we have all three readings?
Ordinance to change appropriations for the year 2020 and declaring an emergency. Ordinance to change appropriations for the year 2020 and declaring an emergency. Ordinance to change appropriations for the year 2020 and declaring an emergency.
Any other motion? Mr. Thompson? Second by Mr. Kelch. Any further discussion? Please hold on.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Gadd.
Yes.
Mr. Duracy.
Yes.
Mr. Kutch.
Yes.
Mr. DeNardo.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present, voting nine. Moving on to item G2, resolution authorizing the city of Norwood to purchase and use employee dishonesty and grateful performance of duty policy through public and community school. Mr. Bonzel.
Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, I'm not sure exactly what they need to get all their needs tonight, I'd love to maybe hear from our law director if he has anything to add about this.
Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. There's going to change the law, there are some employees that require a bond, and there are some under our ordinances, particular clerks and people of responsibility, auditors and chargers officer are two of the big ones, where we have to carry a bond on them, and rather than do that, they change the law and so we can have, we can take out an insurance policy instead, and that's pretty much what this does is authorize the city to do that instead of paying a bottom company to supply a bond. It's just, it's a lot cleaner and everything costs less.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Duracy.
Through the chair to the law director. Is this paid by the city or by the employee?
Mr. Moore.
This will be paid by the city.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Any wants? Mr. Moore.
I kind of was on the motion, is there any urgency that we need to do three readings this night or should we?
There's no urgency as far as I know, and there's no emergency clause, so the council wants to think about it, and as far as I know, that's not a problem.
Mr. Mayor.
I don't think there's urgency, but it's the end of the year, it's just really housekeeping for us. The city has paid for the bonds for these employees for years, it's not like the employees aren't going out and getting these bonds, this is not a change, if anything, it's probably going to save us in the future, so.
Mr. DeNardo.
Yeah. Typically, bonds are for a period of time and then they're renewed, is this the case, like are we coming up to a period that would end and then therefore wouldn't have any carry over, maybe that's part of it? We pay for an indefinite period.
There's a bond on me apparently, but I did get it, I don't know what to do about it.
Mr. Duracy. You have questions, I'll make a motion.
I'll follow on, ready. Yeah.
Motion by Mr. Duracy. We have first one. Mr. DeNardo. Second. Any discussion?
Mr. Brayden. I'll take, here's a quick question, maybe for the law director, for the chair, please just, can you explain why an employee would need a bond and what part they have a role?
Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. The idea is that these are positions of trust in case they should, one of these employees should do something nefarious, it's a chunk of money we can pull against to recover for losses that might come from that, I mean, for example, the treasurer, we have a $50,000 bond, tax commissioner $25,000, auditor, mayor, law director $25,000, the deputy treasurer's a $15,000 bond, you know, the clerk to the tax department is a $5,000 bond, moving the one to our ordinance, and it's just there, you know, because we're positions of trust and we could do something, we could cost the city some money, we could, you know, abscond with things, and it's just a protection, we have to have that.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Any wants? We have a motion by Mr. Duracy, a second by Mr. DeNardo, have a first reading. Please hold on.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Gadd.
Yes.
Mr. Duracy.
Yes.
Mr. Kutch.
Yes.
Mr. DeNardo.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes.
All members present, voting nine, motion passes. Mr. Williams, may we have three readings?
Resolution authorizing the city of Norwood to purchase and use employee dishonesty and make full performance of duty policy through public and community school, PEP.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Moving on to item G3, ordinance authorizing the safety service director to advertise for bids and to enter into a contract to improve Heritage Park just south of the Norwood Municipal Building and declaring an emergency. May I have a motion? Mr. Brayden.
Drop, make a motion to have all three readings.
Motion by Mr. Brayden. We have all three readings. May I have a second? Mr. Kelch. Second by Mr. Kelch. Any discussion? Mr. Duracy.
I guess through the chair to the law department. Do we have to have an ordinance that you can go out for bids, that's over here, to advertise for bids? I'd much rather see an ordinance come in front of us that has who's doing the work, how much it's going to cost to do the work versus us just saying, yeah, go out for bids, advertise and sign the contract.
Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't think, let's answer the question, I don't really know if we needed ordinance to go out for bid, certainly we need a council to approve any contract that's over $50,000 or something like this. I think it's best practice that council approved the process ahead of time to do that, and so I'm not really familiar with what this project would be, the CBDG funds, it's grant funds, but I'm not sure what the dollar amounts are or what can we bid. I would defer those questions to the mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Look, did you have?
He deferred to the mayor. It's good. It's all right. I'm sorry.
Mr. Kelch.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will ask a fair question, this summer, they really helped with the parks committee, but I did receive the communication to show the credentials from Mayor's day or six, to kind of say, hey, we want to try to do this, create a park with City Hall, I think it's a great idea, it's right there by a key restaurant, right on the neighborhood, right next to City Hall, it's going to be pretty good, but what do you think about coming before council that, if it's over a certain amount of that, it'll be a small area, we will have to approve that, so I just want to put that on there too, but I guess I will ask the mayor, what kind of project is this going to be, is this going to be a big project, small project, what's the jurisdiction picking?
Next time. Thank you.
It is a city park, and really it is a very small project, but even small projects come with big price tags sometimes, so there's a lot of work that needs to be done. Ultimately, it'll be a seating area for City Hall employees who go out and enjoy their lunch, but also for the restaurants that are along the way, there's two restaurants that are going right now, Eva Rosa's and any other businesses that are right in that area. So it is a small seating area, I think there will be three tables there with four and then a seating wall and just some landscape stuff. Heritage Park was where the old firehouse was, right next to City Hall, it's in dire need of improvement, it's just been years since anything was done in there, so that's really what the idea behind it is, the CBD, the Community Development Block grant funding, a lot of that came out and they were pushing for improvements that would, during COVID, and we're still in COVID, but for outdoor seating, for things like that, and that's part of, part of why we've sort of pushed this forward, because we'd like to see it completed sooner than later, and that's why the emergency clause is on here and what we're looking for. It's, it's not, as I understand it, the CBVG money will cover every, every bit of this, so it's not an outlay of money from our operating funds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Duracy.
Okay. Whoever wants to answer, let me rephrase my question here, or statement, I guess. To me, this sets up an ideal setup for the administration to go in based on a wage rate, because it states, and to enter into a contract without coming to us, because we're technically, with the wording of this, saying we're giving you the option right now to enter into a contract, no matter how much it is. Yes, it's grant money, I get it, you're probably not going to spend it now, but however, this sets a precedent that our administration can come to us with exactly this wording every single time, and we just approve a contract without seeing anything prior.
Next time. I'll apply that. Actually, we don't, we don't go to the law department and state what we wanted to say into and advertise for bids, but I think this is pretty much a standard template that's been used for many years within the city. I understand your predation about approving something like that, but I do think it's sort of been standard practice, and I would defer that question then to the law department, because I don't, when I ask for an ordinance, I typically don't ask for, that heading line is not specific when it comes to enter into, you know, bid for and enter into a contract. I think that's sort of standard boiling plate stuff, but I'll defer to the law director.
Mr. Moore on that.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will say Mr. Duracy's comment is essentially correct, that there are, and there have been times when that was, no, we'll authorize councils, when I was on council and then later, but we'll authorize bids, but we want to see them before we do the contracts, so let's separate this into two. Generally, the authorization is either, for most ordinances, is of a contract, it's, we have a draft contract with a dollar amount attached, if it goes out to bids, there generally a dollar cap on it, sometimes this, they're separated out, for something like this, it's, you know, we want, what we thought would be, the language, that would be relatively a small project, we don't have a dollar amount, but it's not coming out of the general fund, and so, but I mean, if council would prefer that this contract be separated out, that's fine, we can try to do that, but again, it's, you're right, the language says, you know, authorize to advertise for bids and enter the contract, that's all the authority and the jurisdiction.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Bonzel.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I'll say that Mr. Duracy, I think has a point, a process of last year, or I guess it was this year, sorry, earlier this year, then there was a road project, I think that we advertised for bids and approved the, you know, the safety service director to enter to a contract all in one. You know, it's not my favorite way to do it, because I'd rather be able to, either, I'd rather there be a max coming here, some kind of a number that we can say, look, it's following this to this number or under, I feel better about that, so we'd like to see that in the future with council. The specific project, though, I agree, we have to apply for this CBVG grant money. I do have some concerns about this, though, because we, in the previous administration, the very rare times they would ask for our opinion, one of them would be about how to apply, what type of project they'd like to apply for the CBVG money, so I would like to see, I mean, I guess there's probably a three-year application, this guy's done there so many years, but I would like to see council more involved on those kind of decisions, at least to give some input about where you think that we might think we want to go. As a president on that, I think this project is probably a fine project, but any money that we use for something like this is money that we can't use for something else, so you know, there's always an opportunity cost to whatever, whatever we do. So again, I think this is fine, I'm going to, I'll vote to approve it, I don't think it's that big of a deal to do both the specific ones, but I do agree with Mr. Duracy, so he's careful.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzel. Mr. Duracy.
So I will make a correction for the mayor himself here, because on the paperwork for the requesting ordinance, an administrator did write down to advertise for bid and enter into contracts, and this wasn't something that the law department just spit out a computer, this was something requested by an administrator to put into that, into the head. I don't admit that works with this, and this seems like quite a fine project to go in on three readings, however, I don't want this to set a precedent for the future, for future projects, where we're entering into a contract without seeing any numbers, or seeing any details, or, you know, just frustrating, I guess.
Thank you, Mr. Duracy. Mr. Thompson.
Yeah, there's one thing I agree with, Mr. Duracy is saying, yeah, I think in the future, especially in big dollar projects, it would be nice to see the two separated out, you know, ordinance to go out for bids and order an ordinance to enter into a contract. It is a valid point, and I do remember us discussing this in the past, though I can't recall exactly when, but it is something like where, question to Mr. Moore, should, does council need to make a formal request to law department to have things set, stepped out like that, or can we just sort of like, we talk about it here and then?
Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, it's an interesting question, we prepare ordinances based on what we think the requester is requesting, and some contracts are different than others, for example, we want to do Montgomery Road, you know, we've got a million and a half dollars to do it, but we've got a limited window in order to get it done under a grant, and so a lot of times it would be all at once, a lot, sometimes the bids are done and then comes, you know, the administration coming to council with the actual contract to approve, sometimes the administration wants to know, how does the, you know, discount this council will be with us going down this road, and maybe it'll be, if there's, if there's not a time crunch on it, do the, you know, ordinance authorizing, you know, the bids and then come back with the contract, it just kind of depends on exactly what it is, but again, tend to focus on what we, you know, the Requestor's getting, whether it's a council member, the auditor, the mayor's office, whichever it is, so. If you sent a formal request, I'll be honest, it'll be six months from now, you might remember, we might not, you know.
It might be, but just knowing that, we could, we could request it when time is available to do that, that we would like it done that way, but it's worth, it's worth that when we have this particular kind of thing come up, when it does ask us to do both, and when more, and so we have an extended discussion about it.
Please hold on.
So that we make sure that everybody actually is okay with anything into the, with anything we have to go to.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think what, I mean, the law director is saying is that whoever requests the ordinance is the one that kind of dictates like what they're going to say, so, and I think that, and I'm sure that it's in my face, it's looking to what we're saying right now, and they're here, so I'm just saying, if something, if the ordinance still comes through like this in the future, you have issues with this, I mean, just so that we have, maybe, and people don't know, you know.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzel. Mr. Moore.
I think just like the end of the project, this council, and actually the last council as well, have made very clear that the idea of doing all through, just running things through is not, so the administration and the law department and all the other departments, as much as possible, we do, we are very, very conscious of trying to get the council as much notice ahead of time, the council's very serious, this council's very serious about, well, no, I'm not in a hurry to pass it, I want a chance to think about it, I want a chance to hear from the public about, about the issue, so as much as we can and as much as they can as far as putting together what needs to get put together, we really are conscious of trying to get as much advance notice to council as we can, so there's time to think about it.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Any one else? Mr. Gadd.
Just a question to the mayor, mayor, since this went like a party, this is kind of a separate issue than a normal parks project, which would have went through committee, could we possibly just get like schematics or just some views of kind of what we're going to do, just so everybody's aware, you know, you can see how lighting is or whatever, and just how the layout's going to be, because I think it is a good project, and then that way everybody can be even more supportive of it.
Mr. Fair.
Yes, those, those plans are all in place and we can get those, actually, we can send those, I can have those emailed out to each of you, and then we can even probably post those on the Facebook page so that the community can see those, and let me just add, in addition to what Mr. Moore said, I understand, I hear you loud and clear, I understand that you'd like to separate those in the future, we will work to make sure that it's bid out and then come back to you for a contract, I understand that level of communication that you want and that, what your expectations are, so take that from me, I didn't write this specific request, but I will make sure that both the safety service director and anybody else that's putting in, requesting ordinances from the law department, from my administration, understand that requirement, and we will continue, there are times where expediency is a factor, where, you know, we are against the timeline and council only meets every two weeks and all that stuff, but I, we will make our best efforts to have that information to you guys and get you a heads up prior to that, so I hear you loud and clear.
Thank you, Mr. President. Any wants? Mr. Kelch.
I think, Mr. President, I just kind of agree, I'm super supportive of this project, I'm definitely going to approve it, I've been making talks with town members who request this, you know, it's been on the radar for a long time, it's been something we want to do, that's how about we stay off of it, as a community and our projects, and I think it's going to be, should be, this is just a, we got, we got the opportunity to do it, let's get it done faster, we're proud of it, slower, but I definitely do also agree to separate them in the future so we can kind of see what's going to, how much it's going to really cost, really cost-wise, and, you know, but this is definitely something that's been on their, their jurisdiction radar from dawn, and I'm glad to see that prior to nearly dawn, so.
Thank you, Mr. Kelch. Mr. Gadd.
Just one other thing, suggestion to the administration is, and I agree with Mr. Bonzel, in the past, even back when we thought of the Maryland Law Council before, and Mr. Moore, Mr. Detmer would bring a request and say, hey, you know, we're going to put in for a grant, I need any ideas that you might have by, you know, maximum date, and they would gather all those ideas and then kind of formulate and decide what was going to happen, so if, you know, we can just do that again in the future, next year, whatever, however those come up, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Gadd. Mr. Duracy.
Last item, I promise. Yeah, I'm supportive of this, however, this has been an end of work that I'm buying for a while, we seem to be doing this last minute, slamming everything down. I said when I started, I hate last minute stuff, I hate slamming things down with third people, this is a great project, I understand that, let's start getting things out a little sooner for people to look at. Also, anybody watching that has anybody local and live in Norwood that would like to put bids in, please put your bids in on this project, see if we can get somebody from the city of Norwood actually doing this project.
Thank you, Mr. Duracy. Any other comments or questions? Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'm, I just want to toss out my assumption, I understand that Community Development Block Grant had for many, many years only been available on a three-year cycle, every three years, the city puts an application to get, it made the 80 and 90, $120,000 over three years, and there's public hearings on that, and it's figured out, and that's what Mr. Bonzel and Mr. Gadd have been talking about, and I think this comes from a different stream, Community Development Block Grant, there's another, there are other ways to apply for money under the large enough county Community Development Block Grant, I think that's where this comes from, it's not part of that, that three-year planning cycle, and I think that's why this, and I think there was another one earlier this year, so I think this is a different process, and I think that's why.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Any wants? A motion on the floor by Mr. Brayden, I would second one, Mr. Kelch, have all three readings. Anything else? Please hold on.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Gadd.
Yes.
Mr. Duracy.
Yes.
Mr. Kutch.
Yes.
Mr. DeNardo.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present, voting nine, motion passes. Mrs. Williams, may we have all three readings?
Ordinance authorizing the safety service director to advertise for bids and to enter into a contract to approve Heritage into a contract to improve Heritage Park just south of the Norwood Municipal Building and declaring an emergency. Ordinance authorizing the safety service director to advertise for bids and to enter into a contract to improve Heritage Park just south of the Norwood Municipal Building and declaring emergency. Ordinance authorizing the safety service director to advertise for bids and to enter into a contract to improve Heritage Park just south of the Norwood Municipal Building and declaring emergency.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Mr. Brady.
I'll vote to pass the ordinance.
Motion by Mr. Brady to pass the ordinance. May I have a second? Mr. Kelch. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Dracy.
Yes.
Mr. Kelch.
Yes.
Mr. Denardo.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present, voting aye. The motion passes. Moving on to item H, communications, H1. Mayor Victor Schneider regarding the appointment, Civil Service Commission Marty Carell. Mrs. Williams.
Letter dated December 9th, 2020, regarding appointment for the Civil Service Commission, six-year appointment, excuse me, address to Mr. Marty Carell. Dear Mr. Carell, it is my pleasure to appoint you to the Civil Service Commission beginning January 1st, 2021. Your term will expire on December 31st, 2026. Thank you for accepting this position, and I look forward to working with you in the future. Sincerely, Victor Schneider, Mayor, City of Norwood.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Mr. Bonzel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would move that we receive and vote over.
Motion by Mr. Bonzel. May I have a second? Mr. Brady.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Mr. Bonzel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say, I think it's a great appointment. I think that Marty is very highly respected by, by so many people, great guy, somebody I've always enjoyed conversations with, so, very knowledgeable, I think he's going to do a great job.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzel. Anyone else? Mr. Brady.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a correction on the name, it's Mr. Carell, so, Carell.
Oh, Carell.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brady.
Nice guy, nice guy, good, good appointment.
Anyone else? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Dracy.
Yes.
Mr. Kelch.
Yes.
Mr. Denardo.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present, voting aye. Motion passes. Moving on, all members are present. On to item J, adjournment. May I have a motion for adjournment? Mr. Bonzel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would mutually adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Bonzel. Do I have a second? Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Happy New Year, yes.
Mr. Dracy.
Yep.
Mr. Kelch.
Yes.
Mr. Denardo.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present, voting aye. We're adjourned.